Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. As a reminder, please note that board meetings are being recorded for the convenience of those unable to attend this video conference. Recording and closed captioning will be posted to the Birds YouTube channel following the meeting. Alex, could you please call the roll?
Of course, Chair. Karina Pollan?
Here.
Thank you. Phoebe Shaday-Arnold, Kazina Zad, Aaron Bogard, Chantel Cabrera, Janil Chacon, Lily Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Marjorie Dean Stog?
Present.
Thank you. Kari Edwards?
Present.
Thank you. Gregory Faulkner?
Present.
Thank you. Anita Garcia? I see you there.
She can't speak on the chat, Alex.
All right. Sheree Gibson? Anthony Giordano?
Here.
Angela Green? Navid Hassan?
Present.
Thank you. Allison Hirsch?
Present.
Thank you. Michelle Joseph? Ruth Maria Kenley? Jessamyn Lee?
Here.
Thank you. John Madderick?
Present.
Donald Nesbit?
Present.
Thank you both. Alan Ong?
Present.
Thank you. Kaleris Salas Ramirez?
Present.
Thank you. Mahisha Sap?
Present.
Thank you. Thomas Shepard?
Present.
Thank you. Gladys Ward? And Ephraim Zachary?
Present.
Thank you. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So continuing from yesterday's agenda, I think the last item that we covered were calendar items two through seventeen. So the next item on our agenda is an attorney-client session. May I have a motion, please, to enter attorney-client session?
So move, Donald Nesbit.
Thank you, Donald. May I have a second, please?
Second, Navid Hassan.
Thank you, Navid. I'll just say, all those in favor of entering attorney-client session, please indicate your approval. All right, Tom?
Hi, Lily.
Thank you.
Hi, Effie.
Hi, Anita Garcia.
All right. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion is approved, and we are all back in public session. So at this time, I'm going to turn over chairing the meeting to co-chair Nesbit, Donald.
Yes. Thank you, Tom, for actually stepping in into I got on. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no worries.
For doing so. The next item on the agenda is adoption of the actuary's recommendation regarding the tier three, tier four, tier five, no, tier six, rather, loan insurance premium rate for fiscal year 2024. May I have a motion to consider?
So move.
So move, Tom Shepard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that?
That's correct. Yeah.
Second, my Greg Faulkner. Merrick, can you please tell us about this resolution?
Thanks, Chair. In your board packets is my letter with the review of the insurance premiums being charged to provide life insurance on the outstanding loans of member contributions. I'm going to share just a couple pages from that letter. I think you should be seeing that now. Can you see the letter?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so what I'm showing here on the top of this letter is the premiums that you've charged historically. This is something the board reviews annually, and in 1991, the premium started at 0.5%, and it's dropped over time, and it's currently at 0.2%. So what that means, that 0.2% is the amount that's added to the 6% interest that's charged on the outstanding balance of member loans, and that effectively pays for self-insurance in case the member dies. It allows for the balance of the loan to be repaid to the member's account. So with this, so to give you a little context, the average loan taken out at Birds is $6,800. So what this extra 0.2% does is that on that typical average loan, an additional dollar and 13 cents is charged per month to pay for this self-insurance. We do a calculation to validate that amount. It's in Appendix B. Let me just show you the calculation. What we do here is we look at the population of actives eligible to take loans. We use the current valuation mortality table, and we estimate the number of deaths that we expect in the next year. And there's like, was it 36 deaths expected out of 25,000 members? So that's an average of 0.14%. So that number is less than the 0.2% premium being charged. If it was greater than the 0.2%, you know, I'd recommend looking at increasing the premium. If it was less than 0.1%, we'd be talking about potentially decreasing the premium. But since it's kind of in between 0.1 and 0.2, it's in a good spot where that 0.2% premium not only covers what we expect the deaths are going to be, but it has a little extra cushion for contingency reserve. So our recommendation is to simply extend the 0.2% premium for another year and then review it again this time next year. So I'll stop and answer any questions you may have. And if not, we did provide a sample resolution to extend the 2% another year.
Effie?
A quick question. Is this something that we are allowed to do only once a year, or can we, let's say, change our mind six months from now?
I think you can change your mind. It's per prior board resolutions, the board has said we'd look at this every year. So Alex can correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can confirm it. That said, the standard past practice has been to review once per year.
All right. I'm just wondering if we're allowed to do it off schedule, let's say, if we decide to?
I will have to confirm that for you, Effie.
All right, thank you.
See, in, I'm looking at page six of my letter. It says, "In accordance with legislation, the Board of Trustees must at least annually review the loan amount." So I think it says you have to do it at least annually. So I don't think that stops you from doing it more frequently, but...
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you.
I think that's the full answer. Actually, I just checked the statute. It's Section 613B of the retirement and social security law, and that is the, you know, what the actuary just gave you is the complete answer. It can be reviewed more frequently, but no less than once per year.
So, yeah, so thank you. Because I guess my question would be as kind of a best practice, right? As a best practice, is it generally kind of, you know, because it would feel to me like doing this two, three, four times a year, while it would be more accurate in the short term? I think when we look at, you know, pension systems in general, and if you want to compare maybe apples to oranges, the investments we make are not short-term, and changes we make to formulas and calculations, while they should be done regularly, you know, it not necessarily will create instability, but it will definitely create more fluid environments, right? So you want to have, in my opinion, sometimes a little more structure to this, right? So, you know, if you knew that you had to look at a change once a year, you know that that time is coming up, right? Whereas if it means you would have to literally sit around and keep an eye on these percentages, and if there's a change in percentage, then you're going to propose a change in the rate. So, you know, I just think, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, I just think that perhaps as a good practice, doing it once a year is like, okay, like it's how we've historically done it?
Yeah, and I would just say, if we did this more frequently, I don't think the answer would be different because we're using data that's based on 12-month snapshots.
Got you.
And so, you know, you wait a year, you get a new extract of the annual snapshot. Everyone's a year older, and then you apply the mortality tables, and you see, if we did six months from now, yeah, I'm not sure if we would actually change the methodology to produce a different answer. We would have experience, you know, we'd have some deaths, and I don't know what you would glean from that, because of course, it's going to fluctuate, and they'll be up and down. But given a little time between the calculations, I guess creates, like the chair said, more stability.
Thank you, Merrick. Effie?
Tom, I'm just very briefly, I'm going to explain where I'm coming from with the question. I do think once a year is actually sufficient. However, if we could not change anything more than once a year, I would look at it a bit more carefully. Given that we can examine it any other time again, I don't want to say less careful, but like, I'm more comfortable going with the recommendation without examining it very closely, because if we see, let's say, seven months from now that we are way off, we can course correct. So that's why, I mean, I do think once a year is okay, but it's good that we have the flexibility to do something about it in case, these are all predictions, you never know how they're going to turn out. That's where I'm coming from. Thanks.
Thank you, Effie. Oh, God, I just, you know what? I'm sorry, Donald. Like, I literally just jumped back in. My bad, yo.
Once you went, Tom, it was quite all right.
And I refer to you as Chair as well.
Sorry.
I don't, I actually don't see any other hands for any questions for Merrick. Are there any other questions just before I proceed? Are there any other questions for Merrick? Okay, there are no other questions. Let me just check the second screen on my laptop. No, I don't see any other hands. Let's proceed. Thank you, Merrick. For this, we will now vote on this calendar item. All in favor of approving calendar item number 18, please indicate your approval. Donald Nesbit approved.
Greg approved. Carrie.
Karina approved.
All right, Tom.
Effie approved.
Allison approved.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion carries. Next on our agenda is adoption of the administrative budget for fiscal year 2024 of the Board of Retirement, Board of Education Retirement System. May we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Second by Effie.
So moved by Greg Faulkner, second by Effie. Daniel, please tell us about this resolution.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you recall, last month, we presented the summary admin budget for 2014 to the board. Did you open up the spreadsheet? So this month, there was a request from Karin to see the total spend of Birds. So what that is, is our admin budget, the investment spends paid to the corpus, and our capital budget outflow. So in column I is what we proposed for this year, the FY24 budget. Total outflow was 3.7 million. Of that, 3.8 million is for the Roth, which is a requirement from federal government. 842 is the corporate expenses from investments, and 34 million is admin budget. If you compare that, if we didn't have the required Roth spending in column H, it will be 34.9 million, which compares about 32.2 from the previous year. So without the Roth, it's about a 5% overall increase year over year, with the Roth 16% increase. As you can see, from 2020, 2021 onwards, the budget has fluctuated going up and down depending on the year and different capital projects that Birds has implemented. As well as budget, we asked for headcount to 30, and reducing our temp budget significantly, and that allows us to be more efficient and of our membership. I know Allison sent questions out earlier last month, so did Sarita, which I responded to. So now, open the floor for the questions you guys may have on the budget.
Are there any questions? I guess I do have a question. Daniel, if you can outline, I know you guys did a presentation on this. If you can outline the increase in headcount in that area specifically, how will the impact in increased services for members, can you outline some of what that looks like for the board?
Sure. Put up a spreadsheet with the goals on it and that out. So here is right here. I'm sure you can read that. Can you just make a little bit?
Yeah, if we can, I got 2020 vision, and it seems really small for me.
This was mailed to trustees, I think on Sunday or Monday. So you all have seen your email inboxes if you want to pull it up. So basically, the call center, we get four people, qualifications two, outreach two, service review two, it'd be a new calculation, we get three, debt benefits one, arrears in unit five, counseling six, internal audit three, legal one, and investment one. And column C, you see all the goals that what we plan to do with these new headcounts.
And I guess second question for me, Daniel. I know last year, we, or in a past budget, we did an increase in headcount, but there were difficulties in hiring. Is this all aspirational, or is this, do we feel like we can actually hire these folks that we actually put in the budget?
Yeah, if you call a couple of years ago, we had a 25 acres of headcount, and we were going to do that, I think, in about a year, 14 months. So definitely possible right now. Our headcount is, I think, open at two. So, yeah, I think it's possible.
And I guess lastly for me, not to take all the questions, but lastly for me, is there going to be a policy around remote work for Birds employees as that would be an incentive for folks to actually take the job?
Yes.
Okay, I'm done. Are there any other questions from the board?
I can't see heads, so you got some.
I can't really see the, as the screen sharing is happening, but I do see Tom's hand first. So Tom?
Thank you. So, Daniel, thank you. And I'm going to ask this question, and it's kind of preemptive, right? So I know that there has been quite a bit of hoopla around, you know, how much Birds spends on its budget as compared to the other systems. And I would love it if you could outline to the trustees sort of the challenges that Birds has as compared to the other systems, and why the differences in our system may have it where it would cost more to provide the services to our members that other systems may not have.
Sure. So if you recall, in January, I gave an overview of our budget historically of lasting 23 years, and I compared Birds' police budget, given that we have the same exact size almost approximately of active members, and active members are the ones that drive transactions. The phone calls, the counseling, the loans, TDA, those are the folks that are doing those, right? So historically, for the 17 years prior to Sandy and Eyes of Rivalry, that was the Birds. Birds was funded at 54% of what the police fund was funded across 17 years, on average, about half. So our members, that half money that police fund got in budget every year. And what that led to was Birds was using a mainframe system that was started in 1965. Police had a brand-new building. We did not. There were definitely inequities between, you know, how we were able to serve our members and how the other funds were. We had a call center at the time. We never owned a P department. We didn't have our own payroll. It was a bunch of different things that Birds not had compared to the other systems that I went through in January, and let's pull it up if you want to see that in detail. So that was one challenge historically, when Sandy and I took over, that we were so far behind the other four systems in how we were able to serve our members. Something that's different about Birds is that we have part-time members. Now, this is unique across the country. The vast majority of pension funds do not have part-time members because in the vast majority of municipalities, part-time employees are not allowed to join the pension. That was the case in your city as well until about, and I think '89 was the case, they sued office council, and the first member enrolled in '93. So even Birds was relatively new to them, part-time members. So we're very unique in that way, and then the majority of members are part-time. So I think we're the only fund in the country where the majority of members are part-time employees. Now, why is that significant to other pension funds? For example, teachers, right? Their members are auto-enrolled. So their first day on job with a teacher, you're in that pension fund. Now, what does that do? How different members? So we have sub-teachers in our fund. They're part-time. T-R-S does not. So sub-teachers, again, have an opt-in to join Birds. So now, once they join Birds, Birds then has to calculate their prior service that they had in the city before they joined Birds. So that's something that we have to do that all the other funds do not have to do, and our peer group, as well, and CEM. That is a big difference. Arrears, prior service is a huge difference. We have part-time members, also as part-time members, we have 58 to 60 payrolls a month that come through Birds with the process, part-time and full-time payrolls that the other funds do not have. Police fire don't have that, neither does teachers. So that takes more employees. Our members are generally working in school kitchens, school buildings. They don't have office jobs. They're sitting down, and they can like go online for information, so they call a lot, or they come in a lot. So we get about 150% more emails and phone calls in our peer groups per CEM. We get 100% more emails, messages, and we get about 150% more counseling appointments per our peer group. We also do flip some more transactions than our peers. So Birds is very, very unique across country and any parent.
Thank you very much. Donald, I just wanted to say thank you for giving me, I just want to just say that it's important when we have conversations around budget to put the numbers into some kind of context, right? Like to just have, you know, compare one column on a spreadsheet to another column on a spreadsheet, you know, to kind of borrow what Mahisha was just talking about a minute ago, is like putting a human element on it, right? Like, this system is very different from other systems, and it serves members who are part-time, you know, primarily women of color, who conduct more transactions and interact a lot closer with the system than in other systems around the city. So thank you for, you know, just giving that context, and when we get to the point of voting on this, I do plan to approve it. Thank you.
Check it. Can you put back up the first spreadsheet, please, to Tom's point on the spreadsheet?
I'll just, if I may add something too. So Friday morning that just passed, I sat in the Birds office at 65 Court for about two hours in the morning, from about nine to 11, and every member that walked in, regardless if they had an appointment or not, or service. But I did see the need for more staff to be there. They, the staff that is there, I got to say, do a unique job, an excellent job in servicing the members. But you have receptionists who were working at the front desk, who were actually handling members' information, logging information just to be helpful and making sure that things get processed. And that is not a traditional office, right? Normally, the counselors who are there are actually servicing members. So I do want to say, there is definitely a tremendous need for an addition to headcount, but I think the question is definitely valid as far as impact to members and the servicing. And so I just had to add that. I sat in their office for two hours on Friday morning, unannounced. So no one knew that I was coming, Sandy. I mean, Dan, you still don't know that I was there on Friday morning. But I went Friday morning from nine to 11 and just sat there in the office just to see myself. And they serviced everybody that was there. I got to talk to the members. They were satisfied with service. But I did take down notes and observe some things for myself. And the receptionist that was there was very helpful, but there's definitely a need for definitely other counselors to be there to assist our members who do walk in off of the street and should have a service of excellence when they walk into the office. So I just had to add that to it.
Actually, if I can just comment, Donald, that, you know, one of the shifts in terms of the culture at our organization is to think more of ourselves as a member-facing retail financial institution. And if you look at where have many of our leadership team members come from internally, it's from that staff level. I mean, our head of operations, it was a receptionist at a counseling center at one time. Our head of MCU, basically, up to the same ranks. So, you know, a lot of this is how we think about how the organization runs, and they are the foundation of what we do.
So check that spreadsheet. Can you put it back up, the first one?
Are you able to see the spreadsheet or the goals as well?
No, I can't see it right now. I see a window screen right now.
Oh, sorry. Let me try again.
Yeah, this one. So to Tom's point, like, you know, we were cognizant of the spend, given, you know, the feedback we got from, you know, the trustees or criticism as well from some others on the spend. So if you look at the total spend, you know, it's not dramatically increased, and we get more bang for our buck. If you look at FY22, it was 36.1 million total spend, and we're doing, we're only increasing spend 30, it's actually going down if you compare Roth to Roth, because the Roth 2.0 million is required for us to do. So that, if the script was ever passed, that not being the spend this year. So actually, our spending is lower than 22 with 30 more headcount and less temps, more efficient. So we have been cognizant of what the cost is to the city and our members. So we do take that into account during the budget. So I want to highlight that, that, you know, that is something that we did consider.
I do have to say this. For those who are new to the board, too, Tom may have heard me say this before, but some others may have not. In past budgets, there was more of a concentration on temp employees who were a part of the budget process. And as a union guy here, I wear several hats. I'm an employee trustee here, but I'm a union guy, and temp employees do not receive health insurance and things that are substantial to their family, right, and their well-being. And so for me, I was opposed to that. I'm glad to see that in this budget, it is actually a reflection and a concentration into looking at less temp employees and moving some into permanent status, where those employees, like most employees at Birds, will be Uh, with those employees, um, mo- like most employees at Burrs uh will be under a protected union status. Um, at the union, um, whether it's uh D C thirty-seven member, local fourteen oh seven or anywhere else. Um, I did. Mention on my objection to that in the past. And so I'm glad to see that there is a shift. I mean, this budget that looks at. Um, getting those employees, uh, those benefits. And that they deserve if they're working, if they're working somewhere in the protections that they deserve as workers. Um, in in New York City. So I do, I do have to say, I have to say that.
And I agree with that, Donald, uh, very much, uh, just personally and also from business process wise. If you're a full-time Burbs employee, you can access all of our systems. If you're a technical, you cannot. For uh security reasons. So these employees that will become full-time. Will become more effective and efficient because they cannot access all systems at Burbs.
Are there any other questions uh for Daniel on the budget? Uh, Tom is, your hate, your hand is raised again, or is that from a four?
No, again.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. So I know that historically, right, when we look at. Um, uh, things like the call center, right? Um, there have been historic issues. Um, with things like drop call rates and um hold times and abandoned call rates, right? And and um, that was in large part, and again, like. You know, having the benefit of having been here for a few years. Um, that was in large part because of like lack of personnel. And um, you know, so when we add um, uh, resources into this budget. Um, to bring in uh. More more headcount, right? And more permanent headcount. Um, uh, the net goal of that is to provide a better service. Um, uh, for members. So I, you know, did want to share that part because there. You know, this budget is budgets generally tend to be complex documents and um. Um, you know, in this particular case, um. Uh, we've known for a while what the issues are, but we also understand that resolving those issues requires resource. And um, uh, you know. Uh, it's good to see that those things were thought out uh in this budget. Now, will it cost us more? Absolutely. But at the end of the day, what's the net result? The net result is to provide a better service um for for Burrs members. Again, thank you.
Are there any other questions and or comments uh on the budget for Dan? Are there any other questions? Uh, Effie?
Yeah, what what part of our budget is considered an investment expense?
Go back to that check sheet on the first one.
I couldn't see it.
It's generally our consultants and our systems internally, including that.
Just to be clear, there's, I cannot read that spreadsheet from my.
Okay, so uh, it's eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for this fiscal year. What that is includes is our internal systems like how you said that we use. It's our consultant, Seegu Margot, it's Accia. Uh, those are generally our expenses for investments. They're about a corpus.
Yeah, Effie, what I'll add is that that does not include the fees we pay to asset managers.
No.
Um, that information is actually uh in our financial reports, but that is not in this budget.
I mean, th- those fees are clearly expenses related, right?
They are. They're reflected in financial report, but they're contracted for and uh. Basically reported to us for reporting in our financial statements by Bureau of Asset Manager and the Controller's Office. We can actually provide that to you over time if you'd like. Uh, we do track that. It's.
We have it. We want to see historically.
Yeah.
The control, the B A M is also happy to present his one.
I'm I'm assuming those fees is something that Bam negotiates on our behalf, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions on the budget? Any other questions for Daniel? Seeing no other hands. Uh, all those in favor of approving calendar item number nineteen, which is the authorization of the budget. For twenty twenty-four. Please indicate your approval at this time. Donald Nesbit approved.
Tony, you're done. I'll prove.
I see approved.
Nina Garcia approved.
Audrey Dinsa approved.
Any opposed?
Allison opposed.
Karina posed.
And Allison opposed.
Allison opposed, Karina.
It was his favor, sorry.
Kari Edwards in favor. Uh, any abstentions? The motion, thank you. The motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is calendar item number twenty. Authorization of commitment of the funds to the Roth. Uh, implementation capital budget of the board of retirement system. May I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
So moved by Tom. Do we have a second?
Second by Effie.
Second by Effie. Uh, Sandy, please tell us about this resolution.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can hear you now, Sandy.
Actually, you you dropped out. What what?
Oh.
Danny, we're on the Roth implementation. Can you, uh, can you introduce the resolution, please?
Yeah, the, uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um. The Roth implementation is a unfunded mandate from federal legislation secure two point O. Um, we are. Uh, we have a very detailed three-phase introduction of the Roth changes to the system. Uh, those phases include a comprehensive change in uh the T D A. Roth options, including uh the prioritization of the um, uh. Make-up payments for over fifty participants in the T D A four oh three B plan. Uh, role in the future rollovers of existing accounts into Roth. Base contributions into Roth and all the um required system changes which would occur. For accounting and reporting on all those changes. Uh, this is approximately a three point eight million dollar uh estimate. Uh, Jessica, our Vitek project manager, velocity project manager is on the call with us. Is there any detailed questions about what this plan entails? Uh, we, with the approval of the budget, we will uh unleash Vitek immediately on work on this project so that we can. Hopefully be ready to handle um Roth contributions come January. So if there are any questions, uh, I will respond or Jessica can respond.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Going one more time. I don't see any hands. Uh, all of the favor of proving this calendar item, uh, please indicate your approval. Donald Nesbit approved.
Great fall. You approve.
Hi, Tom.
He just have approval.
Margery.
Any, any opposed?
Karina.
Alice. Allison opposed.
Any abstentions? The motion carries. For the record, Allison opposed, green opposed. Uh, next on calendar item, uh, is calendar item number twenty-one. Uh, I'm gonna ask everybody to please mute yourself if you're. Not speaking, uh, cause there's some background noise. Our next calendar item is calendar item number twenty-one, authorization of the controller. The city to invest, sell, or exchange the funds of the of the retirement system. May I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Uh, so move is moved by Tom. Do we have a second?
Margery.
Margery, uh. Dean Stott uh has second. Uh, do Antonio, can you please tell us about this resolution?
Absolutely. This is the quarterly resolution um. That authorizes the controller to um implement the actions and directions of the board as it mean um, as it pertains to investments and also to buy and sell securities, rebalance and the like. Um, investment strategy administrative staff um recommend the approval of this recommendation.
Are there any questions from the board? I guess uh for me, I do have a question. Uh, Allison, is there any update on the first and tier vote that we took almost a year ago?
Uh, we checked in today. It is our understanding that the team is still trying to understand whether the procurement policy board rules for public. Uh, investment manager selections were followed. Um, that and combined, so that is still in process as well as with the asset allocation study. Um, in the works. Um, as you know, I believe from the last month's investment meeting. Um, all new investments in public equities has been stopped halted until. Uh, resolving the final strategic asset allocation to assure assess, you know, if we're going to move around allocation, et cetera. So um, those two things are currently the whole day.
Okay. Uh, uh, any, any timeline on when this process maybe move forward?
Well, I mean, Antonio can probably speak to the strategic asset allocation process for Burbs better than I can, but that should be resolved. Um, hopefully by October, and I don't know when the underlying procurement questions will be resolved.
Okay, thank you. I I guess my my only issue here is the holdup on a, on a. Authorization or directive uh from the board uh to move forward with an investment and it's. I believe that was last May uh that we made on that vote, that we took that vote. Um, and I guess.
It was June.
It was June, so it's actually exactly a year. So I guess. For me, it's just a difficult time understanding how we can take a vote a year from now and nothing has happened on it. Um, so that's uh just my view at this point. And I hope at some time there is some resolve or some resolution around this um as. For me, it it is always said from the Borough of Asset Management uh to us as trustees that we point the direction. And the borough moves right on our direction. And I just don't see any movement here. And so these are my questions surrounded in that. Um. Uh, Allison.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, I'm I'm dying. You could go ahead.
I I would say that um, in general, the. The the goal is to be in a partnership between the Bureau of Asset Management and the board. And first and here was approved by a process that no one at Borough of Asset Management knew about or was involved in. It was our understanding, right or wrong, that we were to hold on that until after we went through base ten. So while it was might have been voted on by the board last year, there was no uh. Attention paid to it, right? You know, I understand there's a disagreement despite the emails that went back and forth on that. Um, but in general, it has to be a partner. It needs to be a partnership for the the pro- the process and the authority to work. Um, and I hope that we can rebuild that partnership. If you choose to reinstate the authority, I hope that we can rebuild that partnership in the future. And if. Not, that is the choice of the board.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Uh, I saw Effie and then Tom. Effie?
Yeah, so this is an item that we vote on quarterly. Is that correct?
Yes.
What what happens if we vote no? Like if we don't approve this, what is the consequence of that? Like what direction do we go in that?
Yes. Look, in practice, um, the. The infrastructure um. That is, so the infrastructure for buying and selling of securities, you know, rebalancing and the like cannot function. Uh, that's the reality of the the situation. Um, you know, it's not like as if, um, and and so now the um. The resolution says any prior actions um can still be taken, can take into account. So if, for instance, the bureau had already started on the implementation. But in practice, um, the ability to to move forward on new instructions would grind to a halt. And so. Uh, any kind of future actions cannot be taken.
Alright, so basically like there is no recourse, like we don't, like there there's no alternative to to going this path right now, right?
Under the, yes, absolutely. You know, as stands right now today, um, from a practical perspective, there's not.
Uh, uh, and we do this every quarter, even though we have no other alternative. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Effie. Uh, Tom and then I see Tony just raise his hand.
There you go. Second mute button there. Thank you. Um. So. I'm, here's, here's the problem I got, right? Um. It's. I'm concerned that um. You know, this board makes a decision and um literally it can just get tied up forever. Uh, in BAM and and not executed on. I that is a concern. Um. The other part to that is, and then if we say, well, we don't want to. Reauthorize the controller to invest, sell, or exchange uh. The funds of the retirement system, then like we're stuck too. Um, I don't particularly like that. And and the reason why is because. You know, in in the state, there's this thing called kind of like a a pocket veto, right? So if, you know, the 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 governor doesn't want something that the legislature approved, she can just like not sign it. And um, I I feel like that's where we are when we're talking about um BAM in this case, right? And I agree that there are um some serious issues that need to be worked out. Um, but yeah, I agree. Like I I hate symbolic votes. Um, I I hate votes where uh there's no recourse, right? Like there's no alternative. Um, so um, you know, I'm gonna, I gotta hold my nose and kind of vote for something. Um, but at the end of the day, um, like this doesn't work well. When um, you know, decisions that this board makes. Um, you know, can basically get held up at the end if. Um, uh, if the Bureau of Asset Management has an issue with it. Um, I also, you know. As kind of a side note, look in the other, in in our other spaces roles as P E P members and you kind of see the same thing, right? At the end of the day, we can approve contracts all day long, but until they get kind of registered by the controller's office, that's it, right? So, you know, I I I guess for me, um, this is. Um, really a respectful ask, and that is that. Um, you know, like, gotta do better here, right? Like. If if you have a system that's saying it has serious issues with. Um, not executing on a decision that it's that it's made and and. You know, we see that play out in different spaces. Um, I really do think that there needs to be a long, hard look at what that means. Uh, and and really do step into um, uh, this space as. Um, true partners, right? Um, and as partners with an understanding that, you know, this board isn't, is the one that makes the decision. And we need BAM to to execute those decisions. And um. So that's, that's really all I have to to say about that. Like I have to hold my nose and vote for it, but I don't particularly like it.
Tom and Donald, can I say something on this? Um, because um, you know, obviously the the hang up here is is really the the um, the crux of it. Look. I think you should vote for it. I think that, and I made this presentation to the uh Board of Trustees a few months back, that. Ninety-plus percent of the stuff we agree on, right? Like, and so, you know, I don't want to. I don't want to make too much of our disagreements, at least in this arena, but I also don't want to minimize one thing on this particular search. And I'll, I'll talk about the global listed infrastructure search because technically we have not executed on it yet, right? So, um. Our consultants have wanted to do this search before I got here. So I, when I, when I want, when I want to be clear about this thing in particular versus everything else. I want to be clear about it because the length to which we were, the the thesis behind it. The again, which was was thought up before I arrived. So our previous trustee, uh, consultant, Michael Wright. Who longest-serving consultant at any of the systems. who longest serving consultant at any of the systems. I know it kind of was a, you know, I think thoughtful, did a fantastic job at the big picture things on asset allocation for the for the retirement system. So I I want to get that out of the way that that the idea was the parking place system as a whole has some flaws when it comes to the real asset portfolio. That essentially being overweight fixed income at a, you know, when rates were zero ultimately would not serve the the fund well. And and so so I I want to be clear about that, right? And then the second aspect there is, we did invite the Bureau of Asset Management. I gave a presentation to the Bureau of Asset Management on several occasions on on the the global listed infrastructure search. You know, we telegraphed this a number of times. So I want to be clear about this because again, I think I don't want anybody at the board today to make too much of our differences and why I think that this should be passed, right? And why I think that on you get ninety plus percent of the occasions, the the way that this process and system works, the dialogue around asset allocation, around portfolio construction and the like. So I want to, I do want to be clear about that. But I also want to say on this particular search, we telegraphed this for more than a year. Our consultants talked to the bureau on several occasions of that why we wanted to do it, the investment thesis behind it and rationale. We we utilized, so in we clear, we are not bound by the PPV rules in the same way as a mayoral agency. So I also want to be clear about that. We followed them to the extent that we could. The one area that we did not follow it was because we couldn't. The the way the PPV rules work are that we have, they say you have to have two consult, a manager has to be on two consultants list. That is clearly because if five if five systems participate in the search, then they wanted to to kind of narrow to the numbers, you'd have two of they have to at least have two of the five consultants. However, if nobody wants to participate in a in a search but us, how is it possible to have two public market consultants, right? And so to the extent possible, I think we did, we used, I think, a system that are is utilized by consultants, many of which are employed and have contracts with the Bureau of Asset Management or with the 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 other systems. We had our consultants, we invited trustees, we had due diligence that we printed out. I think the system that we utilize is top notch that allows you to do electronic scoring. We the the process went through the procurement office. So on that one in particular, I just want to say, and then there's a disagreement on whether or not it applies, right? And that's where it's at. I would be happy to have the 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 further conversation on the global listed infrastructure search. I believe and 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 I hope everyone here understands that I've been a straight shooter on a lot of this stuff, right? I I want everybody to to be clear. I believe I've been incredibly fair, that our consultants have been incredibly fair on this. So I'd be happy to have that conversation and move it forward. But I had to speak my piece on this because this is one area where I don't like I want to be clear that on on multiple occasions, we telegraphed what we wanted to do and why we wanted to do it. We gave multiple presentations to the board to the extent that there's, you know, even the the to that previous board. I just got to say my piece on that and happy to have those further conversations. At the same time, I do not think that that should hold up the a bunch of other work that has to get done. Which is why even through all of that, I do think that that it is important that we pass this resolution because at the end of the day, the the, you know, the work that has to get done must get done through the the bureau and the comptroller's office.
So I know.
Yeah. Those who have been waiting to respond, I mean, to ask their questions first. And then we can get to your response, Allison. Tony had his hand and then I seen Kari and then Allison.
So I like when Antonio gets excited, I get excited. Thank you for that statement, even though it preempted me, Antonio. I find myself in the very great opportunity to defend the comptroller's office. Tom, from what I understand, most of those contractual hangups are in DOE, not necessarily the comptroller's office. So let's 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 give credit where credit is due. On the whole, I think it behooves us despite any of the stuff that's occurred in the pre in the in the in the past year or so to work well together and work in a partnership. Because I think there's a lot of good work to get, it needs to be done. And and but my question is really about this element and regarding alternatives. If we chose not to do this, or just in general, maybe even to make life easier for the comptroller's office. If we were able to hire our own outside counsel to assist with implementation. And 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 again, even linking to our vote yesterday on the resolution, which is probably a long way off from getting all figured out completely, but having outside counsel and being able to pull this out of the of of the hair, so to speak, of the comptroller's office might make it better for everyone. So I was wondering if that was a possibility and I was hoping and I I will support this resolution because I think it's important for the comptroller's office and our board to work better and have a better working operational relationship.
I Tony, I would just say again, ultimately to the decision board, I don't think that's advisable. I do
I'm not saying that's a support resolution. I'm saying
No, 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 I'm not even talking about supporting the resolution. Look, I I do think that, again, we're all able to sit down and 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 kind of work out what I think are are ultimately overcomeable differences. But I do think that the the system as is works well almost all of the time, right? And that's really kind of what I I've been trying to get at. And and why I think that, you know, look, we usually have, we used to pass this annually, right? Like we we want to have this conversation and it's important to have the conversation. But I I do think that the 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 system as is works very well, most almost all of the time, right? And so that's that's really kind of where where I'm at there. But the reason I I was maybe a little hot on 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 the global listed infrastructure search is because it is my opinion that if the if if there are people in 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 that in the Bureau of Asset Management that said that essentially they didn't know about it. I think either things were getting blocked or they were willfully not knowing about it because it was something that we talked about on a number of occasions. I have the presentations to prove it and and I I've stamped those. I keep everything. And so
Believe you implicitly.
One idea, that's just one area where I do have to say that, you know, we 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 telegraphed it for quite some time.
Kari in there.
Yeah, thank you. Look, I'm I'm a I'm new to the board, but I'm really tired of politics being played with people's lives. I really don't buy what Allison said, no disrespect, Allison, because I think there could have been updates given to the board prior for a year. So if you guys had this holding for whatever reason and just seeing Antonio's passion about it is that these folks are working hard. And I want to say this in a public forum because whatever the real realities are, there could have been updates prior to getting to a year. And it's just more of the same and I and I and I'm not and I'm and I'm and I'm really picking up off of Antonio's passion about it because this guy works hard, his team works hard, but yet we keep going through these nuanced realities and while we're asked to come on a meeting a day afterwards and be a part of this stuff, it doesn't tell me that a comptroller's office, Bureau of Asset Management can't get at least an update prior to us getting to this point. And so I want to make that more of a public statement. But I don't really appreciate it. And I think that we are starting to fake politics that ends up affecting our members and affecting the way that their folks who don't make a lot of money have have their retirement and stuff changed. So that's my statement on it. Also, my phone is about to die. I'm gonna try to plug it in. So I'm I'm voting in favor in case my phone dies before I get back. So I just want that to be, Alex, to be noted, but my vote is in case my phone die.
Noted, yes, I've got it. Kari, one thing I want to add to here, just really quickly. Is that, look, I I do think, look, I think there's a path forward. I do, right? And 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 the the question is the question we posed when I gave the presentation, which is how can you do customization, right? Like how how is that possible, right? I again, I a hundred percent believe that the best path is collaboration. The best path is the path that's been laid out. It's certainly the can be the path of least resistance, right? The the and the question of the question we've always been trying to answer is in a with with research that's that's that I believe is well thought out with the backing of your outside outside advisors, how do you get there, right? That is really, I think, the 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 crux of everything like. And then who pays the cost of customization, right? That those are the the two key things, right? And if we can get there, then I think that we can, I think we can move forward. Not that there won't be disagreements, but those disagreements are based on policy, on investment policy. I mean, those disagreements are based off of maybe different inputs on different views of the world. On the difference on whether or not you believe, you know, core fixed income is is a a great parking place or not a great parking place for for a particular asset like that, those type of disagreements are the disagreements that I think that everybody welcomes. I certainly know, talking with Steve and talking with the athlete, they welcome those disagreements as well. Right? And so that's where we want to get to, right? We want to get to those type of disagreements, not you know, disagreements outside of the perimeter, like, you know, me and 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 the folks that we work with, right? And so that's that's, I think, the 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 big portion, Kari, that, you know, again, trying to not make make too much of it, but those are the type of of discussions we always welcome to have and and to the extent that it is one that we can get to, you know, happy to have it.
Thank you, Antonio. Allison?
So I want to respond in a couple ways. First, I just want to make it clear, Antonio, that nothing I said intended to assert that you have been anything other than straightforward and honest and that all of the work that you do. And I just want to make that very clear that personally, and I know professionally within BAM, we have a tremendous amount of respect for you, and I hope that nothing I said made it seem otherwise. I do want to be clear, though, and you and I, Antonio, have had this conversation before, but I can't speak to what happened before January first, twenty twenty two. And I can't speak to even, to be honest, what really happened before with many of the conversations amongst investment staff before we were able to, the comptroller with the participation of trustees was able to bring in a new chief investment officer who has a different approach to how to to the importance of customization and the importance of listening to the trustees than the prior administration and the prior investment teams approach. And so I only know what I was told, right? Which is, we didn't know about this, this wasn't it. And so like, that is for right or wrong. That was, that is, and I don't doubt actually that like there were many conversations between you and and Bam, between Segal Marco and Bam staff. And and I will also say that, you know, I think one of the reasons why strategic asset allocation is so important this year and and the investment team is trying to do it differently is because one, they want to be more inclusive around portfolio construction and make sure that it's not just like asset, like consultants do the allocation and BAM staff does construction because that doesn't make any sense. It should be a holistic process that everyone does together. And I believe based on the common positions about this that I have with Steve, that like, there is agreement that the parking places are not necessarily right. Right? And so there is a lot more, and and I will say that what is frustrating about this conversation, and again, like this is the choice of the board around whether or not to approve you know, this investment authority and we will abide by whatever decision the majority of this board takes. But what is frustrating about this process and what is and sort of the lack of trust is since since coming into office in January of twenty twenty two, since joining this board in August of twenty two, like we have worked hard and clearly failed when it comes to Burrs, but I think have done well across the other systems to rebuild trust, to restructure how we function and operate in order to under to believe to like to prove and really create a participatory process that we're all engaged in as stakeholders and that the trustees make have the final say and of course but agree or disagree to what the decisions are. But there is also and and we are even going through a a strategic and tactical accountability review. Donald is on the oversight committee and I know was not able to attend the last meeting. But the goal of that is largely to figure out how to create efficiencies in order to support customization, understanding that each of the five systems are different. So it but nothing we say or attempt to do like is is it does not feel reciprocated or trusted that anything is sincere. And I understand that there's like a lot of history and trust and to build and I take accountability for my role in that. But I do want to be clear that it is not I I don't even know where I'm going to end this, but this was like, I I just can't speak to whatever conversations happened before we got there.
Thank you, Allison. I see Tom. Effie and then I believe Greg had his hand up. Tom?
Thank you. So I did want to clarify something. When I brought up what happens in our other space, specifically the PEP, I didn't quantify that, right? Like I didn't say it happens this many times here and that many times there. It was really to point out that the same type of issue exists in both spaces. The second part is look, I get it that this works out fine ninety percent of the time, right? The problem is, you can't ignore the fact that you get hung up ten percent of the time. And it's the hang up ten percent of the time that causes the acrimony. I I I saw the hand go up, Antonio, but my point here is I don't want to amplify the acrimony, right? I don't want to amplify. I just want to kind of throw it out there so we all know what we're dealing with, that we're dealing in a space where those types of issues exist. And I I said this this morning, actually, in a conversation to Sandy, that I see some incredible opportunities for us to do some incredible things together, right? But the reality is, we do have those types of issues that we have to work through. And I I believe we can, right? I think we can end up in a place where we can make really good things happen and where we can you know, kind of move things forward. So I I I'm just being real about what I see, right? Where things have been historically, but I'm also optimistic that we can move things forward. Again, I'm 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 gonna vote for it. I'm just realistic about what I'm voting for.
I just want to answer one thing that you said, Tom, because to be clear, when I say ninety percent agreement and then ten percent disagreement, and in almost all of those disagreements, you know, it's still executed upon, right? So I I also want to be clear, like, so like, it's not ten percent of the time things get hung up. It's ten percent of the time we don't agree on something. And then of those, it still almost, I mean, pretty much always gets executed except for, so I I I'd want to make sure that nuance is not lost that like
Hung up to me is like, I'm kind of part southern too, right? Places where we don't necessarily agree.
Yeah, and and you should be clear about that, like even in the areas we disagree. You know, whether it be asset allocation, whether it be on the manager, whether it be on sizing or or our minimums or anything like that, right? I don't want to say that disagreement means no execution, right? Disagreement just means that, hey, we have a different philosophy on this thing. And but usually even after the end of philosophy, again, the the instructions get executed on. So I would, I want to be clear about that, that it's not ten percent of the time that things get hung up, because that's not, that's not the case at all.
We have Effie and then Effie. Let's see Effie's hand. Effie?
Effie then Effie, alright. So I I'm relatively new to the pension fund world, especially this board, and it sounds like there's some history that I'm not completely aware of. Just to be clear, I am intending to to vote yes for this, but I'm a little bit confused, like I I expected the relationship to be completely cooperative. If 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 we instruct something to 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 the BAM, are they not legally obligated to just follow our instruction and execute? Am I missing something here?
I'd say that the, yeah, I mean, yes, I think the 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 question here, and look, I I I've waited on on what I think, but there is some disagreement on that is is the procurement rules, right? Procurement rules get a little funky sometimes, right? Until that on this issue, it's around that, right? And so it's a weird, it's a weird governance structure, right? Effie, like this is, this is not, you can't study any other pension funds to to understand this governance structure, to be clear. This is a one of one situation with regard to to the New York City retirement systems. So if you were looking, it's not that you're new to the pension world that makes it confusing, it's that it's confusing to everybody. So uh i- if you were looking, it's not that you're new to the pension world that makes it confusing, it that is confusing to everybody.
All right, I I'll just conclude with, I really hope that we'll bridge all of our gaps and find ways to cooperate cooperate. At the end, we're really working to the benefit of the retirees of the city and trying to help the taxpayers ultimately pay less if we do a do a good job, you know? So it benefits everybody in the city that we work together and do well.
Hundred percent.
Okay, I don't believe that I see any other hands other than Kari, is your hand up a second time? Kari and both Tony, or is that from last time? Okay, seeing no response.
Since my hand is up.
Uh okay, uh seeing uh that this isn't a second time or another or additional comments that need to be made, we'll go to um a vote on this, all those in favor.
Can you just restate the, I got thrown off uh for some reason, my technology. Can we just restate the motion? Because I I I I got thrown off the 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 feed and then I had to get back in. So I'm I'm not sure what we're voting on.
Discount on the item uh number twenty one, to be exact, is authorization to the control of the city of New York to invest, sell um and exchange the funds of the retirement system here at BURs.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Chair Nesbit.
Yes, Tom.
I would like to have a roll call vote on this item.
Okay, that's fine. Alex?
Certainly, Chair. Um taking it from the top, Corina Pollan.
Approve.
Thank you. Lily Chan.
Abstain.
Thank you. Marjorie Dean Stog. Uh Marjorie Dean Stog. Welcome back. Uh Carrie Edwards?
You had, you had already voiced his vote with you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, in fact, I have that recorded. Thank you, Antonio. Gregory Faulkner.
Can I pass for a second?
I'll come back. Anita Garcia.
Approve.
Thank you. Cherie Gibson. Uh Cherie Gibson. I'll come back. Anthony Giordano.
Approve.
Thank you. Navid Hassan. Thank you. Allison Hirsch.
Approve.
Thank you. Jessamyn Lee.
Abstain.
Thank you. John Maderick. Hmm, I think John has, I don't see John still here, right? Uh Donald Nesbit.
Approve.
Thank you. Alan Ong.
Approve.
Thank you. Mahisha Sapp.
Approve.
Thank you. Thomas Shepherd.
Approve.
Thank you. Uh Ephraim Zachary.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna come back to everyone who didn't respond already. Marjorie Dean Stog.
Abstain.
Thank you. Gregory Faulkner.
Abstain.
Thank you. Cherie Gibson.
Which agenda item we're starting on?
This is uh item twenty one, authorization to the controller uh to invest.
Uh, I saw that. Approve.
Thank you.
Uh uh are we done, Alex?
Yes, Chair.
Okay.
No, uh hello.
Hello, I, I'm sorry, who did I miss, please? Oh, Dr. Green, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can I have your vote, please?
Sure, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
So the the motion carries. Thank you, Alex, uh for going to the role. Uh the next, the final agenda item uh is in attorney-client session. Uh may we please move to attorney-client session at this time? This concludes the agenda for this meeting, the date of the next meeting of the Board of Retirement System. Uh the Board of Trustees' meeting is to be determined. Um may we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion by Tom Shepherd, do we have a second?
Second, Cherie Gibson.
Second, Cherie Gibson. Uh all those who approve, please indicate if you approve. Donald Nesbit approved.
Anita Garcia approved.
Any abstentions? I mean, any opposed and want to stay off for another hour? Yeah. Any, any abstentions? Uh the motion, the motion carries.